Thank you, Kennedy.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is the public hearing for local law. To move the official appointment of elected officials. Being acted by the village board of the village of Copenhagen as follows. Section one title, a local law to establish a new appointment date for elected officials. Authority, the local laws adopted pursuant to the authority granted to the village board of the village of Copenhagen by municipal home law of New York and the town law of New York. The village board of the village of Copenhagen wishes to move the official appointment of elected officials to the first Monday in January following the elections in November. The village board feels this move is essential to permit the proper amount of time after the elections to allow for the counting of ballots to take place after the general election. Section four, the effective date, this local law shall take effect upon filing of the Secretary of State as required by the provisions of municipal home law. This time I open up to body or the floor here. Any questions, comments?
I don't understand what it takes that long to count the ballots for...
It was suggested by NICOM to do it because it also makes the year easier since it's not following our fiscal year. It would be January to December instead of December to November. It would follow more of the town.
So this changes our organizational meeting as well?
Yes.
So your normal election is November and then January 21st. I mean, government knows that, we're just kind of giving that space.
So when will our next election be, when we elect somebody up here?
Next November.
In November.
Was that done right? Oh, I'm sorry.
This people will be here till November, or till next year.
Yeah.
Here for now.
Yes.
Okay.
If you don't mind me asking, how was that done? How was that changed?
We did a local law resolution change.
Well, how did it state?
What's that?
Did it state that the, what is it, three people up in it?
Three people, yes.
Did it specifically state to them three people stay until November, that same year?
That was automatic.
Yeah, that's automatic, that's right.
When they changed the...
It was automatic based on whose record, whose books?
The NICOM, in the state statutes.
That...
The terms carry over.
The terms carry on.
The terms carry over till November. So instead of electing them in April or March, we have, we'll elect them in November.
Usually when you do that, obviously you guys didn't start way ahead of time. You would've started a year ahead of time before these people, these three people got in. And you say, well, their term's gonna go from this time, but this year it's gonna go till November.
It's automatic, it's by the law.
I don't think it is.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, we'll see.
Because our elections don't, we don't hold our elections until November. That's what the people voted on.
But the people didn't vote them in for that much, that period of time.
But that's the way, it's just gonna carry over, that's...
Right.
Okay, alright.
Sorry.
Sorry.
It's Watertown's fault. One-way streets everywhere. Hey, how are ya?
And will that vote will be here or down the...
Down the town of Denmark, general elections, be on the ballots down there?
Yeah, they'll have a ballot specifically for residents of the village of Copenhagen.
Came in late, sir, do you know what this, what the discussion's about, this public hearing?
There's apparently two different...
Yep, this one's for the moving of the elected officials from January.
Oh, okay.
Because our elections will now be in November, next November.
With the rest of the world?
Yes, sir. Get a couple more recipes, somebody does come in and finish themselves probably.
Have you got music or anything?
Sing a song.
You're serving sandwiches here.
Now, this is a hearing.
It's the public hearing.
Public hearing. When do you have the vote, when we vote? That's how that happened.
That's already done.
That's already done. This is, this is to set it straight, because normally it would've been appointed, the pointies would've, the elected ones coming in would've been in March or April.
Right.
So we want to change, bring that back to January.
I understand that.
So that's all this is addressing.
So we're having a hearing after the vote?
After...
Because you said we've already voted, uh...
For the changing of the election, the changing of the election has already been done.
Right. That's what the hearing's about, right?
No, this is, no, this is about, this is just changing our, changing our annual, like our organizational...
I understand that.
You know, so that's all we're doing, is just the time when the new...
The new elected.
New elected officials take their office.
In January.
Right. Because otherwise they would have to wait until April, and there's no point in having the election in November if you're gonna do that.
Is there a rule on how long a public meeting after that?
I'm just giving another, there isn't really no, there's really not, but...
I didn't think so.
Another couple minutes just in case somebody likes to...
Did we schedule the other one immediately following?
No.
I used to offer quick, but I deserve still at home.
So what's...
I haven't been home yet.
When we leave, Frank, I'll stop by.
Yeah, what is for dessert?
Have everybody over now.
I'll have dessert.
Yeah, because our other public hearing doesn't start till 5:30 anyway.
Correct. In ten minutes unless there's any other directions. Close this public hearing. Give me a motion to close it.
Motion, go ahead.
Make a motion, close the public hearing. Motion from Sharik to close the public hearing, second.
I'll second.
Second from Kim, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
opposed, motion carried. Then we got another twenty minutes to the other ones, so...
I thought I noticed that Laurie put over the last one, she said immediately after...
That's the special meeting.
This is a special meeting after that one.
After this one you just concluded.
This is one public, then we got another public hearing at 5:30 for the contract to Rutland.
Right, and then...
And then after that one, there's a special meeting to formalize.
It's confusing, you got two damn many special meetings.
Amen.
Is there any reason we always start this at five o'clock, or 5:30?
Oh, it's just...
Just carry.
Just time, our time, we can get everybody together.
Because I've had three or four people tell me that they're not even done work ever, they can't get here for these things. So you have no idea why the special meetings especially are always early.
Mostly for our time, so trying to...
Trying to fit them in, I don't know how, you know... Trying to fit them all in, Frank.
Put Ben to fit a plug?
Just trying to fit them all in, I didn't say anything after that.
Laurie, do you have any paperwork for tonight's meeting?
What do you mean paperwork?
Was there something printed out that we could pick up for this meeting?
No, I didn't have any.
No, there wasn't any. Is that what you're looking for, an agenda?
Yeah.
This public hearing is for the fire protection contract with the town of Rutland. Effective 11/14 through 12/31/2022. Standard contract, we're looking at $2,500 for the remainder of the year for fire protection through Town and Rutland Fire Department. Go ahead and open it up to the floor.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Where are they gonna house the equipment?
We are still working on that at the moment. Everyone that's been to this point has fallen through.
Okay. Firefighters that are in Copenhagen now, obviously they'd be able to join Rutland?
They are able to join Rutland, yes. They will have to submit an application. Rutland makes no choice, these...
That's definitely incorrect.
That is correct, we have no decision on that. That's it.
How much apparatus is gonna be here?
We're hoping to get one pumper to start with and possibly a tanker.
After, oh, go ahead, sorry. Oh, sorry.
To clarify, all the equipment that's now sitting in the barn across the street, that's not available.
That's time enough.
Okay. Alright.
You said this runs till December?
December this year, then in December, then we have to start it again.
Do you have to do this all over again? Because unfortunately, the district's fiscal year is just the opposite of ours. So they would be starting their new, for January 1th till December 31st.
Who has been the response up till this point?
Rutland, Rutland and then Loudville, West Carthage and Castleton have all been advised.
And you know, is there any or very many Rutland firefighters live, go by here?
Yes, sir.
Idea?
Off the top of my head, four or five maybe.
Five, and then there's one that's at school all day.
So if there's a fire tonight, who goes to it?
Rutland.
Rutland.
Rutland and their, and...
And West Carthage, Loudville.
So if there's a house fire tonight, we have to wait for Rutland's fire trucks to get to Copenhagen?
Yes, sir.
Unbelievable. Poor planning. Very poor planning. I hope there's no children inside of a house with a whistle ball, that's all I gotta say.
Were there other options available?
As far as...
Well, you talking about houses burning down and everything. Was there anything else, was there any kind of contingency to get anybody here any faster than from the town of Rutland?
We did everything within the law that we could do.
Okay, thank you.
When do you expect to have some apparatus here?
As soon as we can locate a suitable facility for it. We got one other one that wait, let's see if we can negotiate.
Yeah, we had one negotiated and they, yeah, changed the terms.
Yep.
At the last minute.
I think it's a nice building right up the street, you could probably negotiate for the use of that building. What else is your apparatus?
Maybe?
Possible. Could try, it's not a done deal yet. So why can't you use existing fire hall? To house their apparatus?
There's issues, I'll turn that over to Candace.
I will say that I cannot advise my client to enter into a contract with an entity that is going to be dissolved by the state, and it's my opinion that they cannot enter into any other contracts given the fact that their purpose for existing has been dissolved, and that would not be a legal, sound decision to do that. Can't enter into a contract with an entity that can't enter into a contract.
Question? When are they going to be dissolved, at what point?
That's up to the Attorney General's Office to dissolve the corporation.
When is this going to take place, tomorrow, the next week, December 31st?
Call the Attorney General's Office in Watertown, that's not up to us to judicially dissolve someone, that's not a process that the village takes. We've already taken the steps to dissolve the volunteer fire department, and what happens next in regards to the corporation, that is a state Attorney General dissolution.
I have no idea when it might take place, they give you no idea.
No, they don't, no. They do not answer to the village, they do not give us timeframes. No.
So my writing and assuming this village fire department, it still exists?
No.
Even though you don't recognize it?
No, no, they don't. No, they do not exist.
Because they've been legally notified that they no longer exist?
Yes.
It's strange, maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but I've never seen a notice posted publicly that says the village of Copenhagen Fire Department is no longer active and part of this village.
That was the resolution that was posted, that they filed the petition on. That's that resolution that went into effect thirty days after it was posted.
So does the Copenhagen Fire Department respond to anybody outside the village?
No, they don't respond to anybody at all.
Champion?
No, we no longer have a contract with Champion.
Does the fire department have a contract with Champion?
No. The contract that was in existence with Champion was terminated when the fire department was dissolved. Because that contract involved the village... Yeah, the village holds that contract, not the fire department. Or the Fire Department Inc.
If anyone in this room can think of a suitable place that is heated, that will house a truck, we need to speak up and find something. I know hard feelings and things like that, but we need to protect the village as much as possible. Like I said, if you know a suitable place that's heated to house a truck, let's try to find something. I know, they've talked with the school, at the bus garage, but it's not gonna happen. They've talked about lower bus garage, no heat, bad location, if there's emergency during the day, too many people out, too many kids.
Well, and games are really difficult, you know, when we're coming into bed, we all see...
Right, things like that, it's too congested.
Yeah, it's too congested.
I say, if you can think of anything... Need to act on it.
We'll throw it out. We're about to old enough, I think, John. Yeah, they used to load the tire trucks. Oh, here.
Yeah.
That's on, that's on the list.
It's there, but not finished. And the other one was the old town farm, but we're looking at that, what it takes to get that. It'd be a lot of work on that.
Usually that's all done before you take care of a fire department like that. It's gone, you know, but if anything happens, everybody up there is gonna be responsible.
Sorry, I had to work, folks. Fine. Is there traffic?
Yeah, Steve, there's traffic. There you go.
But instead of making the board feel like crap, maybe we oughta... Why are we here? Why are we in this position at all?
We've discussed that, we've been over it down the road. This mainly is just, we're gonna move forward with the fire protection through Rutland this time.
We're not here because we wanna be here.
Exactly.
We were given the choice.
This three bay isn't deep enough?
Not deep enough.
Anything?
No.
Deep enough?
Yeah, because I think we can just...
Foot or so.
Yeah, it lacks, it doesn't lack much, but it lacks enough.
How much property does the village want on the backside of it?
Enough to go out, and then we got to build out. We're looking at that too.
What about your bay right here, in the two bay?
Still too short.
What about the school bays that they're not using?
That, that...
We just went down that avenue, too congested.
Yeah, no, you're good.
Too congested, down the lower bus garage, too congested.
Not needed.
Gospel, gospel.
We're looking at it, we gotta do some work. Yeah.
Hey, you want where the...
Well, that's if the Attorney General rules that we're a viable fire department trained staff, and they say we don't want to get rid of them, then what? I do not have an answer for that, miss.
What if the Attorney General decides that the paperwork should've been turned in a year ago? We've already, it's already done, that stuff's done. So if everybody's, for public safety, everybody wants to work for public safety, this Rutland option is the option they're going. Rutland was at the shop the other day and we were talking about it, we're all gonna join. There's members here that are sitting in the waysides that are just sitting here waiting for something else to happen. They've got support here. Rutland's got support here, Champion's, West Carthage, doesn't matter who it is, the support's here. And a lot of it.
What about the place, when you turn by the stone pit there, you got it, put that big garage up? What about a place like, you know, because you'd have to go up and over the hill, wouldn't you? Yeah.
So back to this here, putting them here. Has it been talked about putting trucks here?
Yeah, we looked at it and let's figure out, get somebody to come out and look at how much it's gonna cost for that. And we got the other bump out for the back. One bay, whether you do one bay, two bay, so... But it's timing, trying to get...
Enough.
Yeah.
What, do you want four feet or twenty?
Not much, four feet probably, it's not gonna be too much.
It doesn't have to be huge.
Nope. Yeah.
I think it had to be four, five more feet to be able to close the doors and get around it.
Yep.
I don't know who in town has a lodge that big.
It's heated.
Yeah, that's the key is, you know, to keep it just warm enough to keep everything from freezing.
There's enough overhead in this? Yes, okay.
You know, with payloader goes in there?
That's questionable.
Well, they just said yes.
So you got a payloader, you said?
There's a payloader in there.
Put it in dry? We're worried about the whole afterwards.
By your shirts company, say, oops.
You can do training, pull my foot clip.
Yeah, but then I want to be heated.
Gail, you ever drive a pound?
No.
You wanna learn tomorrow?
I can learn. Just make sure it's pointed in the right direction.
Make sure I'm not here.
Alright.
So what's the, here's a question. Being that we're moving forward to Rutland on that side, there's fire department members that are sitting here. What is the future on the fire department's side on that side of the building? We gonna continue to fight this and fight this and fight this until it's gone? Or that facility's sitting there? Like, there's gotta be a plan, a five-year plan, one-year plan, six-month plan, what's the plan for that?
Probably gonna be just like Champion. The Attorney General's gonna make a ruling, and it may sit empty for two years. You know, before they decide what they're gonna do with it. Like Champion sat down there empty, and then they decided to split it up and put West Carthage in there. You know, it's...
We have to wait for the Attorney General to hold it?
Right now, they're holding the ace.
Unless they want to gift it to, back to the village. That's the only other option.
Right, correct, the law is very clear of what happens when a not-for-profit corporation is dissolved by the Attorney General's Office.
So as in the members that you have there, that are in the Copenhagen Fire Department, yeah. If Rutland comes in and makes a subdivision of it, it's gonna be Rutland Fire Department. What's the downfall of Rutland coming in? That's the question, what's the downfall of them coming in? You're gaining more manpower, better equipment, more equipment, better, either way, however you want to put it. More support, and everybody's starting to work out, working here, working there. The day coverage and staff coverage, I know it's mutual aid coming in and stuff like that, but having Rutland coming in, there's no downfalls to it, other than them being out of the area. So if this is such a public safety deal, let's combine with them as a department, the Copenhagen Department and Rutland, and work together to figure this out as a department. We can fight this, you guys can fight this forever. And what do you, what do you got when you're done? Animosity and nothing left, there's still nothing there. You got what, total members wise? Joining forces like this, we did the same thing when we were in Warner's Fire Department in Memphis, right next door. Memphis fought this, and we just sat down at the table with them, Rutland and Copenhagen. but Warner's and Memphis did, and we just combined districts, combined it and said, it's now a Rutland district, we have the buildings, we have trucks here that we can use for this. This is for public safety. Why fight this? Like, why keep fighting what we have? Cause the Attorney General comes back, says we're, Copenhagen Fire Department's a viable department. It, it all works. You still don't, we still have understaffed, overworked, you guys need more help. 100% need more help. Let Rutland take it over, work with them under public safety, and help with this. It's, that's the whole game of this, is public safety. And then secondly, on that, for the village board, like, everybody's going after the village, about the vote, everybody needs to vote. I guess I don't live in the village, and I'm, I'm happy I don't, cause my taxes are gonna go up 50%. You're getting 50%? You're already paying way too much, cause we're in the town of Downmarket to start.
You know, if we kept the fire department.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
Right, yeah, okay.
They come back, Attorney General comes back and says Copenhagen Fire Department's a vital asset, that it's a viable department. All the towns are dropped out. They already have the service, so then your 50% tax is gonna go up. I know in just the town, let alone in the village, Jesus, I mean, it ain't nothing on you guys, the, the taxes are what they are. But your taxes are gonna go so damn high, you're not gonna be able to afford to live here. And then what do you got?
So, I have a question. You, you were talking that you'd seen this happen before, with the merger. What happens with these guys, with their years of service? Do they get to keep all of that, or are they starting?
Absolutely, so 50, you have 50 years of service. After 50 years, those guys that were in Memphis Fire Department came on as Warner Memphis Fire Department, and he kept your time.
Okay.
But in true time and true numbers, other than, I got a 40-year PIN, like, what's the, like, time is what? Man, what do we get out of, dad was in, grandpa's, all this stuff, what do we get after 50 years of service, other than a PIN that says 50 years? You can keep that time, but you don't get a million dollar pension when you're gone.
No, 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 that's not what I'm talking about.
So you can keep all the time that you want. If you're gonna join this for public safety, you decide and just dump all, you're just gonna get out of it? That's your own, you had 50 years, and 20 years, 10, whatever, that's still your time, you never lose your time through volunteering at any department. I don't care if you're doing it through hospice or Copenhagen Fire Department, doesn't matter. I volunteered my time for 50 years, you can be proud of that, no matter what.
No, I.
But when we joined, when we joined the Memphis and Warner's, in Warner's, we ran a lot of calls. We ran 400 calls, we ran a lot of calls. Well, Memphis was about the size of Copenhagen, townwide is pretty close to the same. They didn't have the tax base that we had to Town of Van Buren, I was Town of Van Buren Fire Commissioner when we did the whole thing. And we just, and we all looked at it, Memphis guys, the older group fought it, but they knew they couldn't, in the end of it, they knew they couldn't do your plan, five-year plan, 10, what's in the future for the department? There was nothing there, they knew they needed help. They needed building upgrades, they needed truck upgrades. The, the tax base couldn't afford to do it, so when we joined with them, we had a huge tax base, that we can combine the two together, and we're able to work together, and we did it under public safety. They said same thing, they're gonna get rid of them? No, we're not. Cause that half of the department, three quarters of the department worked in Syracuse, they weren't around them. A lot of our guys worked at Cisco Foods right there in, in, right in Warner's, and they were all able to, if the fire whistle rang and they're at work, they could go to the fire call. They were right in the same town. So they just, we, we gained manpower, we gained training stuff, we drained everything. Now, with joining with Rutland, you're getting three departments because... Look at the equipment that you're gonna get, look at the manpower you're gonna get, look at the knowledge you're gonna get, and there's gonna be ups and downs of the whole thing, we're getting wrong. But if this whole thing is public safety, look what you're gaining by that. It's a huge deal, is what you're gonna gain by. So, and then it'll join back into the cooperation on that. West Carthage and that, it's, it's gonna join the community back together. It's under, it's under, it's under different management, it's under different this, it's under that. There ain't that many people that have vendettas around, that are gonna write off the Copenhagen Fire Department.
Isn't that a fire district?
What's that?
Don't they consider that a district?
Down there?
No, here.
Rutland is, yes. You are correct.
District or non-district, you're gaining another department, it really doesn't matter. Like, you're gaining personnel, equipment.
Right.
Manpower, like, the whole deal.
I mean, this is our, you know, our choice currently to go to Rutland, but that doesn't mean that something else could happen in the future. I mean, that's, you know, all of those things that, you know, we've talked about, it's just, you know, which direction do we go as a village? You know, that's.
And, and in the district side, like, you're talking on the district side, that's where we needed to separate the whole thing from the start, was the fire department side, you have a fire department, volunteers that are fighting fires, rescuing people, doing this and doing that. Now, if a house burns in the village, how many people do we have that are onto a burning house? People that are not judging, not saying anything about it. If you were to pick up Rutland, Castro Land, West Carthage, that's gonna give you a hell of a lot better chance of getting someone out, by adding more people to the fire department side. The district side, that's, that's, that's the, the business side of it. That's that, doesn't matter who, but, that's the business side, it's how money gets distributed, how your equipment gets distributed on that side. It's, it's the fire department side on this side, the public safety on the, is what needs to be combined. By that, you're gonna gain both, but that's what needs to be combined. So, nobody wants to get rid of the fire department, it's not that. There's two separate entities, like we talked before, you've got your fire department side and your business side. Both sides. Sorry, let me, let me.
Scott, thank you. Anybody else?
Well, what Scott's saying makes a lot, whole lot of sense, from what I can see. And I think it's time that these two, all of us started coming together. We're not separate, we're not, we're not enemies, we're neighbors. We need to help each other. Like he said, uh, then other two communities, they got together some way, we should be able to get together. We got a lot of, probably half a million dollars of, uh, fire, setting rain up the road here. Maybe more, probably more than that. And we got, we got some manpower right here, and they're good manpower, they've been in the department a long time. They're good people, but we need more people. We need these other people, and we just gotta stop, uh, fighting each other.
Thank you, Drew. Anything else, anybody? Okay. Anybody else? Twice? Three times? Close up the public hearing?
We need a motion to, so, motion to enclose the public hearing?
We got a motion from Kim.
Second.
Second from Sharif. Any other question? Um, Taylor?
Hi.
Hi.
opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everybody.
Go right into our meeting?
Yep. Call the whole, do the whole pledge, 15 minutes long.
Do, no, I don't think so. You'd like to say a pledge.
So we're gonna call the order to meet, a special meeting. So we have to cover, we need a motion for resolution for changing of the year. Oh, you have, you got it? This is for our first public hearing. So we need a motion for resolution to pass a local law 1-2022 to move the official year of appointment of elected officials to the first Monday in February.
January.
Or, I'm sorry, January.
Motion for resolution.
Motion for resolution from Patty, do I have a second?
Second, oh, go ahead.
Second from Carrie? Any discussion? Around Sharif, yes. Kim?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion Carrie. All right, the next one is a motion for resolution to accept the contract with the Town of Rutland Fire Department?
Fire district.
For the, uh...
Yeah, the fire district, yeah.
Fire district. For November 14th through December 31st, 2022.
Motion for resolution to enter into the contract with Rutland.
We got a motion for resolution from Kim.
Second.
Second from Sharif. Any other discussion? Around Sharif, yes. Kim?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion Carrie.
Who seconded it there?
Uh, Sharif did. Next time I have is, uh, we need to re-levee our taxes, correct? Do you know which taxes? So, we need a motion for resolution to send $76,586.41 to Lewis County to be levied on the town and county taxes.
Motion for resolution for the re-levee.
We got a motion for, resolution for the re-levee from Kim?
All right, second.
Second from Sharif. Any other discussion? Around Sharif, yes. Kim?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion Carrie. And the other thing is, we, last thing I have for us is the RFP for a lawyer, uh, we've got that out today. Everybody had a chance to look at it, you wanna move forward with it, I think we...
We just have to kinda decide on what, I didn't fill in the dates for when, you know, we, we wanna, wanna get it back, so I don't know if you want it back, like, by our next meeting? If we put it out right now, that's probably enough time.
Let's try to get something in.
So.
Cause we got the water projects coming up.
Right, so if we, if, I mean, if that works for everybody else, we just have them back by our next meeting?
Yep.
And, you know, if we're once them a day or two ahead, just make that adjustment?
Yes.
So that you have time to make copies or whatever needs to be done?
Good.
Probably two days before.
Two days, or, you know, like, even that Friday before, maybe?
Yeah. Fourteen, so.
So, the nine?
Yeah.
Or would, or is the 11th, or the 12th soon enough?
No, stay with the 9th, because Monday usually gets crazy.
Okay.
Well, either way, though.
Your call.
Give me a couple days, I'd say Monday, cause it'll be a longer time.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
And, um, you know, if there's any other adjustments to dates or whatever that need to be done in there?
We're good, I don't think we need, we're good, we don't need anything else for it.
I don't think so, then, just for us to say it's okay?
Yep.
So, we need a motion to...
Motion to proceed with it.
Motion to proceed with the RFP.
Second.
Second from Patty. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion Carrie. Anybody else have anything else? Candace, anything for me? All right. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion from Sharif to adjourn. Second from Patty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion Carrie, thank you, everybody.